Candidates for Claremont County Commissioner. We have Commissioner David Hubel on the right, and, but you all have little name tags, you can see that, and Democratic candidate, Richard Perry. And then we are going to move right into the questions. The format throughout the evening is going to be a two-minute introduction for each candidate, followed by questions directed to each candidate, for which they have two minutes to answer, and then two-minute closure. We have 30 minutes for the first three races, and then 45 minutes for the second congressional district. And kicking us off, what are the two most urgent issues? Oh, I'm sorry, introductions first, two minutes. Starting with, they're looking at me because they're like, Mr. Perry.
My name is Richard Perry. I'm Rich for Comish, you might have seen my signs out there. I'll give you my background, I'm a retired airline pilot. I was with Calmay Airlines out of Cincinnati for just about 18 years. I have an airline transporcing multi-engine certificate. I'm a flight instructor, I'm a ground instructor, I teach seminars, part-time weekends. I'm also a captain in the Civil Air Patrol, I command Squadron 2044 in Blue Ash, Ohio. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in aeronautical operations from San Jose State University in San Jose, California. I have about 48 years' experience as a pilot, I've got over 25,000 hours of accident-free flying, which means I'm either good or unlucky, but I think it's a combination of both. I'm also an Eagle Scout, and to this day, I still follow the Code of Ethics. I'm trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And I believe that with my airline experience, my military training, I was both in the Army and the Air Force Reserve, and my Boy Scout ethics, I think I make a good candidate for public office. As an airline pilot, I had to work closely with people, I had to maintain schedules, and I flew hundreds of people across the country every day safely and efficiently. Thank you.
And then Mr. Hubel.
Well, there's no doubt we need more Boy Scouts in politics. I'm David Hubel, I'm one of your three county commissioners here in Claremont County, currently serving as the President of the Commission. I've spent 25 years running my own company, Hubel Management Group, which has specialized in the purchase of and the turnaround of distressed companies. Companies as far away as Moscow, Russia, and engineer as Amelia, Ohio. I came into office in 2012 when there was a vacancy in the Office Commissioner, and the citizens were fed up with deficit spending for the prior three years. I was selected from a field of 12 candidates and appointed to fill the unexpired term of two years. I even run again in 2012, at which time I won with a 40 percent margin over my Democratic opponent. During my two and a half years in office, I've successfully, with my other commissioners, we've successfully balanced the budget, which is what I was put into office for. We did that the first six months of being appointed to office, and each year since, and I can assure you we did well in 2015 as well. Cut overhead in the county government, I've attracted new companies with the help of our Economic Development Office. We've relocated companies here into Claremont County, and I've helped to create new higher-paying jobs. But we've created a more fertile environment for economic development, and I think we've restored some calm and respectability to the Office of Commissioner again. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for creating this event on tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first question will also go to Mr. Hubel, and that will be, what are the two most urgent issues facing Claremont County, and what specific steps should Commissioners take to address these issues?
The county definitely needs more and higher-paying jobs. Having spent the last few months working on an economic development team that was assembled by the Claremont Chamber public, Claremont Agenda for the Future, we identified that it's necessary, in order to attract these companies and higher-paying jobs, we needed to find more shovel-ready building spots. Companies wanted to either expand here in the county or relocate to the county, but we lacked shovel-ready building locations. That was a fundamental problem which we need to overcome, and I think through a public-private partnership that could be arranged. Secondly, I think we need to find and assist companies in locating, recruiting, and educating, training employees. That's the second question that comes out of employers' mouth, is what's your employee base like, and what are they trained to do? And the Chambers identified this through their program, and we're working and encouraging organizations like the University of Cincinnati, Claremont Campus here, as well as Grand Vocational in Scarlet Oaks to create programs which will help train and educate these potential employees from the county. So the two most important areas is building sites and employee recruitment and training.
Okay, thank you. And then that's a question for Mr. Perry. Would you like to repeat it?
Basically, no. I think the two most important issues is the drug addiction problem and mental health problem in Claremont County. It's getting worse instead of better. It's going to get to the point where it may just get completely out of control if we don't do something about it. The Commissioners can't directly fund the projects, but I certainly think that they should do everything they can to get more funding into the system so that we can alleviate this problem. You know, the money comes from the federal government, it comes down from the state government, and we should be doing everything that we can to try to alleviate this problem. Mr. Hubel here was noted as saying that 53 people died last year. That's too many. You know, for every person that dies, there's one more person that shouldn't have died. And on the board, Mr. Crowe also mentioned to another lady that, after she had told him that there were 31 suicides last year, and he said, "Well, maybe it'll be zero next year." So what is that, wishful thinking or what? Let's do something about it. I think as Claremont County Commissioner, it is my job to ask, what can I do for you? What funding can I get for you? Can I get you more personnel? Can I get you facilities? And whatever it takes to alleviate the problem, because it's not going to get any better, it's going to get worse. And by incarcerating people, we're making the system even worse, right? It costs more to incarcerate them than it would be to try to alleviate the problem, to take care of it, to get them straight again. No parent should have to bear their child because of drug abuse or mental illness.
So the next question actually relates to that, and we'll start with Mr. Perry on this one. What specifically can the County Commissioners do about this? What is the best use of funds controlled by the Commissioners to support the Mental Health and Recovery Board in dealing with the opiate crisis and other drug issues in Claremont County?
Unfortunately, the Commissioners cannot, as far as I know, directly give them funding, but they can certainly try to find funding from the federal government or the state government. And there's a levy right now, I believe it's a half-mill levy that's on the books, that's going to have to be renewed next year. I'd like to see it go to, as much as I hate raising taxes, I'd like to see it go to a one-mill levy. It would increase the amount of funding that's available. Also, right now, they're using the county jail as a facility, but they're having out-of-county personnel run the program. It's our house, we need to clean it up, let's get the jobs in Claremont County to take over the problem. I think that would be the best use of our money.
Okay, Mr. Hubel?
What was the question?
What specifically can the County Commissioners do, and how can you directly use the funds that you control to support the Mental Health and Recovery Board in dealing with the opiate crisis and other drug issues?
As one of the founding members of the Opiate Task Force, which we created last year, I believe that additional funding could be used first and foremost for medication-assisted treatment. A product called Narcan helps, that's something which is always in short supply. But we could also have law enforcement carry Narcan on the cruisers, deputy cars, so when they do come across an overdose situation, Narcan will save that individual's life potentially. So if we could increase funding for a drug like Narcan to have on their squad car, that would be a huge plus. We could also fund additional education in the schools, billboards, speaking to students, potentially creating more preventative materials. The Claremont County Commissioners, as Mr. Perry pointed out, we provide funding to the Mental Health and Recovery Board by approving a 2.5-mill levy, and that generates about $2.3 million last year. Now, 2.3 is, the total budget for the Mental Health and Recovery Board is about $8 to $12 million. So it's a small part, it represents probably 20 percent. The Opiate Task Force was founded last year to deal with this epidemic, and it's operated by the Mental Health Board. So I think it's the first step in working toward a solution.
Thank you. Next question, and this will start with Mr. Hubel. What do you see as the right balance between maintaining communities' rural nature in Claremont County and welcoming new development and residents?
Well, the right balance is creating jobs in the county and spreading it around. I don't think by creating more jobs in Union Township is the right balance. If you look at a map of the county, I think we need to spread that around in northern part of the county. We've got plenty of jobs that seem to be created in the last five years on the western side of the county. I'd like to see maybe more jobs created in the city, in the center of the county, and most definitely in the southern part of the county, in New Richmond. In fact, we're working on a, potentially a new industrial park off of 52, which would change things dramatically. So I think to spread these jobs around, so we're not congested in certain areas, that would allow us to have jobs closer to the residential areas and prevent, avoid some of the congestion problems that we've been dealing with in the Union and Miami Township areas.
Okay, you all are doing wonderfully on time, by the way, if you're sitting through these questions. So the question now goes to Mr. Perry, what do you see as the right balance between maintaining communities' rural nature in Claremont County and welcoming new development and residents?
Well, obviously, we're going to want to get new development in it if we can. It is a question of balance in that, you know, we have some beautiful areas in the county, we have some nice farms, some nice ranches, and I'm sure they want to keep it that way, but unfortunately, you know, some changes are going to have to be made. The Cincinnati that was 100 years ago is not the Cincinnati of today, the Cincinnati that's going to be 100 years from now is not going to be the Cincinnati of today. And we have to be willing to make the changes as we see fit and move forward. So there's a number of things I think we need to look at. Definitely, we want to bring jobs into the county. I would suggest looking at expanding the Claremont County Airport. Being a pilot, of course, I like that idea. Mass transportation, I think we need a better system there. I would certainly look at that Route 32 corridor, I'd look at the possibility of light rail to bring jobs into the community. And a part of getting these jobs, we'd have to remember, is also having people to work the jobs. We need to have that educational factor, and I think we're lacking there, and I think that needs to be looked at seriously, so that when these jobs do come in the area, that the people living there are going to be able to do the jobs, do it successfully, and make a good wage gap. So it's going to be a balance. I want to keep the county clean, and I want to keep it green. And I think we're going to have to look at the jobs, and hopefully, they're going to be more of a technological nature, where they'll be cleaner, and, you know, where we build factories or plants, we're going to be able to use that areas constructively and not have to uproot as many people as we might otherwise have to do.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we have some questions from the audience now. And we are starting with Mr. Perry on this one. Public-private partnerships were forged in several high-profile Claremont County transactions. These include TQO, Jungle Jim, and the revitalization of the Ford Plant. What should the role of local governments be or not be relative to these transactions? Is there a helpful role that government can play?
Well, in that case, you know, I would certainly look at the particular situation. I would think each one is going to be a little bit different, but yet, we as a governing body need to look at the perspective situation, you know, how are we going to provide jobs for the county, increase the tax base, try to, you know, get more jobs for people that are going to be what I like to think is lucrative, well-paying jobs. But each situation would, you know, have to be looked at separately to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the majority of the people the majority of the time.
Okay. Mr. Hubel?
Could you repeat the question?
Public-private partnerships have been used in several instances in Claremont County, I'm abbreviating a bit. What should the role of local governments be or not be relative to these transactions? Is there a helpful role that government, excuse me, is there a helpful role that government can play in public-private partnerships?
I think there is a vital role for government in a development of places like the old Ford Plant. Without government involvement, that would have been a blighted property and probably could very well have been torn down. But through the efforts of the county, actually through the state of Ohio, we're able to save that space. Private industry came in, and through some tools that we created during my term, actually, first term in office, we created Port Authority. And that Port Authority allowed a company called Teumarki to come in, and through bond financing and other things, it incentivized them, where they were able to invest, and invest at $65 million into almost a billion square feet of space, and created 300 new jobs, higher-paying jobs. So there was an example where public-private worked. When it comes to industrial parks, we don't really have any private industrial parks in the county today. The reason for that is that the infrastructure developed or required, the roads, the curbs, the storm sewers, the utilities, the communication lines, electric, gas, is so expensive, it's prohibitive. The payoff for the private sector, they're looking for a 5 to 10% return on their investment. Government can have patient cash, which is, you know, they're looking at 20 years, recovering their funds through taxes, through property taxes, through sales taxes and things. So, you know, there's many examples where the private-public partnerships work, and I think we've already demonstrated that during the term of the county.
Okay, thank you. Next question from the audience, and this will start first with Mr. Hubel. It reads, "Now can you eliminate the stonewalling of rehab centers by the neighbors and trustees who stop the purchase of property for the purpose of establishing an upscale facility, as was the case in Felicity Franklin?"
Well, if I understand this correctly, I think they're referring to rehab centers for opiate addicts. Felicity Franklin, I believe, another one was built, a private office was built in New Richmond as well. I don't think you can prevent it. The people that are at these clinics may be addicts, but they're not using at the clinics. The clinics provide some value to society in helping these individuals, they definitely need help.
Excuse me, I don't know if I can clarify the question. I think they're asking if you can eliminate the stonewalling of building of rehab centers. I think they're actually in favor of the rehab centers.
I'm saying I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay.
I don't think, I think the people that may be stonewalling, and those residents that are in the area, personally, I live in New Richmond, and we have a center going up, went up in New Richmond to help these addicts in terms of giving them the drugs required to keep them clean. When you're addicted to heroin, you just can't cut it off. You're medicated potentially for the rest of your life. That's what these clinics are for, to help with the medication required to allow these people to maintain some normalcy in their life. But from what I've seen in New Richmond, or I guess in Felicity Franklin, there's another one, these clinics are being questioned by the residents in the area, however, nothing that I've seen in New Richmond from the clinics that have gone up, the clinic that went up, is there any reason to resist it? I think they provide value to our communities and to the people that need the services.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, how do you feel about stonewalling of rehab centers by the neighbors and trustees?
Well, I have to agree with Mr. Hubel on that one. Basically, these are going to be, with the problem that we have, a necessity. We're going to have to build these clinics, we're going to have to man them. Certainly, we'd like to have them be secure, if that's possible, to where the neighbors don't, like escaped convicts, that these people are going to run loose and cause them a problem. So security would certainly be an issue, but we're going to have to do it. I don't think there's any choice in matter with the mental illness problem and the drug problem we have in this county. Like I said, it's getting worse instead of better, so in my opinion, we're not going to be able to build these clinics fast enough.
Okay, thank you. Question number six, I believe we're on, and this will go first to Mr. Perry. And it actually relates to something you mentioned earlier. Do you see any potential for connecting Claremont County to the downtown Cincinnati streetcar? Or do you see that light rail only running through Claremont County?
Well, there would be a definite connection. We would have to work as a combined effort between the two counties to, I don't know if I called it a streetcar, but it would be, in my opinion, it's some type of light rail system that we could build between the two counties, because, you know, people are going to want to, especially if we're able to get more manufacturing of a technological nature, we're going to have people that are going to want to work downtown Cincinnati and come home to Claremont County. And you can see the situation the way it is now, 125, 28, 32, you know, between 4 and 6, it's a mess out there. And I think if we can, you know, get some kind of a mass transit system going, where there's a lot of excess rail that's already available, and we can reuse it, start it back up again, there'd be have to be some new building, of course, and unfortunately, some people will probably have to get displaced, but I think it's the way of the future, because I think the people are going to move to the east. If you look around the Cincinnati area, right, anything that's open now is Claremont County. So this is the way, I think the people are going to move, and we need to have a transportation system that works very good, where we can get off the road, that's one less part that we have to worry about as far as the drivers and the fuel consumption and pollution. So it's a definite way to the future, in my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Perry. Mr. Hubel?
Yes.
Do you see any potential for connecting Claremont County to the downtown Cincinnati streetcar, or otherwise see light rail running through Claremont County?
I've followed this closely as Commissioner, I've actually had an editorial in The Anchore supporting the eastern corridor, that is, the opening of 32 through Newtown. Currently, as you know, Newtown during rush hour is a bottleneck, where cars sit idle and, as Mr. Perry pointed out, pollution. If you can keep cars moving through there, I think it would cut down on pollution, and obviously reduce the amount of wasted time of manpower sitting in traffic. In terms of the oasis line, which is the rail you referred to, the oasis line was originally pitched as a low-cost rail line, reusing the existing rail line that's there. I think the first time I had heard about this, they were talking $25 million to repurpose this old rail line, freight line. Next time I heard about it, it was $150 million, and then I heard about it, it was $250 million. Now they're talking 300 plus to repurpose a rail line. I can't imagine what it would cost per ticket to make that rail line profitable, or less even pay for itself. So, you know, a $300 million rail line to go for, it could never pay for itself or ever be practical. So I would rule that out. However, I'm a firm believer that the eastern corridor is something we have to have, as Mr. Perry pointed out. Hamilton County is full, Cincinnati is trying to attract businesses to the area, there isn't much available in Westchester or Warren County, it's filling up quickly. There is available land, there are employees. Claremont County is a solution to the tri-state region, and the way to access it is through the eastern corridor, so it's something that needs to be done, and done rather soon.
Thank you. Mr. Hubel, you will get this next question first as well. What are your thoughts on how to best eradicate the Asian long-horned beetle, which I guess is, we're having issues with in battle? Do you support USDA full post removal?
Another project which we have not had too much involvement with, because USDA came in and took over, but I believe in treating trees, chemical treatment of trees. If a tree is heavily infested, I think it should be cut down. They have cut down tens of thousands of trees already, but the treatment of trees is a solution. I don't think they're cutting forests to rid the county of this pest as wise or even practical, but I think the treatment of trees is a solution, chemical treatment, and cutting only those trees that have been fully infested.
Thank you. And Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I'd have to pretty much agree with him. You know, do what is necessary to eliminate the problem. You know, working with pesticides, I think, is a serious business, so I don't think we should be doing any more than we have to. We certainly don't want to be cutting down any more trees than we have to. So if treating the trees, you know, helps relieve the problem, just do what you need to do, try to keep the problem under control. Of course, if the USDA is handling the main part of the project, then I would certainly be glad to have them do it, and assist any way that we can as County Commissioners, whatever we can do to keep the project moving and to alleviate the problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay, that runs us out of time for this dispersion of our forum, and so we will turn to closing statements, and Mr. Hubel will go first.
So I can say with confidence that Claremont County is in as good a position as it's been in a decade or more. We have new employers in the county that have created more than 1,000 jobs, have invested over $110 million in the last two years. Over the last few years, we've had $80 million in new roadway projects come in, much of it funded through our gas tax dollars coming back to the county. We've trimmed the ranks of government by reducing employees headcount in the Commissioners' Office by 4 percent. We've implemented healthcare savings accounts for our employees in the county to incentivize them to start making prudent healthcare decisions on their own. I will guarantee that we'll have another balanced budget going into 2015, and there's some exciting things to come in 2015, which will make Claremont County more attractive for businesses in the tri-state, which I'm not at the ready to tell you about today, so it's just a teaser. But I wanted to thank again the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's event, and my opponent for participating. This is a good democratic process in the system, and we encourage more of this. But I would appreciate your vote on November 4th, and thank everybody in the audience for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
I'm not a career politician, okay? I'm not going to make any promises. I will listen to the people, I'll try to find solutions to the problems, and there's no doubt that there's a number of problems out there that will be, have to be worked on as we go through the ensuing years. As a pilot, I learned to think out of the box. I always try to find new and better ways of doing things, more efficient ways of getting things done. And like an airplane, I can put balance back into Claremont County. Right now, it's a one-party system, all Republican, right? So an airplane is in balance, it flies straight up. If it's nose-heavy or tail-heavy, if it's out of balance, it doesn't fly very well. So you might think about that as, you look at the county situation. So I would try to put balance back into the system here. You can have the same old, same old, or do you want somebody that's like me, I'm new, I'm fresh, I'm clean, I'm excited? I want to do what I can to raise you up and make this county just a little bit better than what it is now. better, uh, than what it is now. Uh, I have a flight plan filed for the county, you, the voter, will decide whether you wanna open it or cancel it. Uh, again, I'm not making any promises, I would just say I'll do the best I can for you. I'm just trying to do my little part to be a good citizen of this country, and, uh, I will do what I can to, uh, make life a little bit better for you. So I'd ask you, Claremont County, how may I be of service to you? And finally, I would ask you all, whether you vote for me or not, go out and vote. There's a lot of good people that are dying for this country's freedom, and we need to show them the respect that they deserve for what they're doing. So no matter what, you, your friends, your relatives, your neighbors, get out and vote. Thank you, God bless you, God bless you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Perry? And...